Um, two. Good afternoon, every Sacramento City Council. Please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby, here. Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Shinir.
Here.
Councilmember Gara.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
The third is here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Um, would everyone rise from wherever you are? I would ask Councilmember Warren to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, welcome, uh, to members of the public watching this on, uh, television as, um, I want to inform you, uh, you may already know that you can participate publicly in this meeting on, on every item. Uh, this is a special meeting and you can do so, Madam Clerk, by doing what?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the public are encouraged to view council meetings on the city's website and to submit ecomments online. To provide comments during the meeting, please dial 916-808-7213 and choose the option for the agenda item you would like to speak on. The consent calendar is considered one item. If speaking on more than one item, you will need to hang up after speaking on the first item and call back into the queue for subsequent items. Please turn down the audio on the device that you're watching a council meeting on, uh, because you'll receive feedback and there's also a delay between your call and the online and cable viewing. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum as outlined in the council rules of procedure, which can be found on our website. For instance, use of swear words, threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect or discourage. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the caller will be removed from the meeting. And each caller does have two minutes to address the council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, let us begin this afternoon with the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, are there any items that, uh, should be continued or removed?
Yes, item number eight is going to be continued to next week's meeting. So it will not be voted on.
All right. Item eight is, are there any questions from members on the consent calendar? Not seeing any.
No approval.
Any on the consent?
No public comment on the consent calendar.
No public testimony. Is there a motion?
I made a motion, Mayor.
Second.
Moved in second, then, uh, Councilmember Hanson, Vice Mayor Harris seconded. All right, no public testimony. Let's call the roll on the consent calendar other than item eight.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gara.
Aye.
Councilmember Gara.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Thank you, uh, all very much. That's the consent calendar. Let us move now to the public hearings. We do have several public hearings, including the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. Um, is Don Home or Howard Chan, our city manager, going to kick it off? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Howard Chan, your city manager, and I'm going to get us kicked off on this item, and that is the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. As you know, this budget represents the city's fiscal plan beginning July 1, ending June 30, 2021. So putting together, uh, putting together this budget is never an easy process, even, uh, in the best of circumstances. But doing so during a pandemic when the financial forecasts are murky at best, uh, and shifts on a daily basis really took a Herculean effort. And so I'd like to thank our finance director, Dawn Home, who's on deck here in a bit, along with her team for their extraordinary work creating this budget. I also want to thank, uh, my team in my office, along with the department heads and my fellow charter officers for their patience, understanding, and support in getting this budget before you tonight. Uh, the proposed budget reflects the values and priorities expressed by this council, including the recent programs we have implemented to help our community during the crisis. Uh, these programs include, uh, interest-free loans to support small businesses, uh, moratorium on evictions, uh, waiving of delinquent, uh, utility fees and charges, uh, purchasing of personal protective equipment to support our external stakeholders who, uh, do not have the ability to secure them due to shortages, uh, providing respite for our first responders and essential employees, uh, via hotel, local hotel programs, providing meals to our seniors and vulnerable population. Um, in addition, uh, we've provided childcare for our first responders and are looking at ways to provide Wi-Fi citywide, uh, as a result of impacts from COVID. Uh, we continue to look for ways to provide immediate support to our community during this pandemic, as this council contemplates how we provide longer-term support. It's part of our discussion earlier this afternoon. This budget does not include the $89 million the city was so fortunate to receive from the federal government in CARES Act funding, which the council discussed earlier today. The proposed budget totals $1.3 billion for operations and capital improvement projects and supports 4,817 full-time employees and is balanced. So as discussed earlier, the federal government continues to provide additional guidance to clarify eligible uses for this funding, uh, to assist cities as they address challenges associated with this pandemic. As such, we will continue to monitor and share new information with the council as it becomes available. In light of these dynamic times, we've created what we are calling a continuation budget, uh, with just a handful of augmentations from the previous year. These augmentations are considered mission-critical and have an impact of less than $500,000 to the general fund for the entire fiscal year. This budget will allow the city to move cautiously into the new fiscal year while maintaining vital core services. Prior to the pandemic, the city had anticipated revenue growth of approximately $40 million compared to the previous year's budget. However, the city is now anticipating a $60 million defined revenue.
You're going to be in view.
City's been able to balance this budget with the strategic use of one-time resources as we continue to identify longer-term expenditure and labor savings. Moving forward, our team will continue to develop options and solutions for this council to consider in response to the demands of this event and take full advantage and support offered by the state and federal governments. For example, we've, uh, completed an audit on all capital improvement projects and have closed out 38 projects, uh, that have been completed or where we have identified alternative funding, freeing up approximately $7.5 million. In addition, we've put 18 projects on hold for the next 60 days. This could make approximately $13 million in general fund resources available should they be needed to address potential challenges in the coming fiscal years. And finally, the city's in the process of completing a comprehensive analysis on all vacant positions. The city auditor will provide an update later in this presentation. Once that analysis is completed, staff will bring this item back for the council to consider the impact of keeping these positions vacant and/or filling them and the potential impacts to programs and services. And so with that, I'll turn this presentation over to our finance director, Dawn Home.
Thank you, Howard. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Dawn Home, the finance director, and before you this evening is the 2021 Proposed Operating and Capital Improvement Program. Our budget is $1.3 billion with all funding sources, $614.8 million in general and Measure U funds, and $11.3 million is allocated towards our capital improvement program. As the city manager stated, the budget represents a continuation budget and includes funding to continue programs and services we delivered today on July 1, with increases necessary to address negotiated salary increases, increased pensions, increased costs for our general and auto liability insurance, and $11.3 million in our CIP to meet commitments for deferred maintenance, ADA compliance, and public safety equipment and apparatus. More than, this represents a 50% reduction in our CIP from last year. The general and measure U budget as presented is only 3.7 higher than the current budget. Prior to the pandemic, the city manager was working with departments to identify augmentations needed to support our growing city. As we learned more about the fiscal challenges before us, these augmentations were reviewed several times to determine criticality. Included in the budget are only three augmentations in the general and measure U funds and three in the solid waste fund. These augmentations are needed to address security of our IT infrastructure, funding for the police department's mental health and impact team, one-time funding to complete the cold storage unit which will protect the city's film, photo, and artifact collection, and positions vehicles and funding for waste disposal in the solid waste fund that was planned for in the recently approved rate adjustments. As we have shared previously, we are faced with the loss of approximately $60 million in revenues in fiscal year 2021 from parking citation and meter revenues, sales tax receipts, and TOT receipts. These revenue losses are related to the pandemic and associated stay-at-home orders, business closures, hotel closures, and event cancellation. The FY21 budget includes revenue assumptions based on the data we have been able to gather as it relates to the city's major, general, and measure U revenues, with the exception of property taxes. We do not anticipate having updated information on sales tax revenues until late fall. However, however, in the next few months, we will know more about our TOT and parking revenue losses in the current year. Additionally, over the next few months, we will have a better understanding of the pandemic's impact on department revenues, including development activity and fire ALS revenues. At this time, there isn't enough data to determine what the impact will be on our property tax revenues. While property transfers are slowing, values are remaining steady. Based on the availability of data while the assessor, based on the availability of data, while the assessor will set the roll in July, we won't know the impact on our property tax revenues until the end of the year. Through council's decision to reserve more than $33 million at mid-year, we are positioned to address our challenges in the current year. However, as reflected in the budget, presenting a balanced budget in light of the pandemic required the strategic use of one-time general and measure U fund resources. This approach provides us with time and flexibility while we continue to evaluate the impacts of the pandemic, with an understanding that we will need to return often over the next year to discuss and make decisions on our financial situation. The fiscal year 21 proposed forecast, including all of the items mentioned, is balanced. While the out-years of the forecast are negative, it is important to note that this forecast does not include potential savings from the management partner study, with the exception of $3.6 million from anticipated baking savings. We will cover this in more detail in a few minutes. It does not include the CARES Act funding in the current year or fiscal 21 for eligible expenditures or future labor growth, with the exception of known PERS increases. Both SCXCA and 522 have contracts expiring in the current fiscal year, with all others expiring in June of next year. This budget and forecast provides a framework and time for us to gain a better understanding of our assumptions. We know that we will need to change as our understanding of reality changes. The enterprise funds are balanced with the exception of the community center and parking funds, which have also been impacted by the pandemic. Additionally, the storm drainage and solid waste funds reflect challenges in the out-years unless rate increases are approved. The city auditor will be covering the storm drainage challenges later on the agenda. On May 19, the annual citywide fee and charge report will be presented to council. These changes are included in the budget. The city manager and his team will continue their efforts on evaluating vacancy data and projects that have been put on a temporary hold over the next couple of months in an effort to understand potential impact on programs and services. By fall, we anticipate having more information on department revenues, parking revenues, and TOT revenues, as well as preliminary information on year-end results. While the budget we delivered is different than prior years, the effort put into it, given our current challenges, would not have been possible without the support and assistance of the city's executive team and their fiscal staff. I would like to thank them and the city manager and his team for their leadership and time as we built and rebuilt forecasts. Finally, I can't say it enough, I'm grateful to lead, lead such an amazing team of professionals. Our budget team has done an amazing job in analyzing and preparing data in an effort to provide the information necessary for council to be able to approve this budget. The city auditor is going to provide an update on the management partners' vacancy information. Um, and at this time, we can either go to questions now on the budget, or we can go to the vacancy information and then come back to the budget.
I think we ought to do it all at once, no? Yeah, let's, let's hear about, um, the vacancy because, as I understand it, just for context, there's a placeholder essentially in, in the budget for assumed vacancies. And then there is the report which analyzes what the potential is on the vacancy side with some suggestions to come back to break that down a little bit more that may allow for a positive budget modification sometime later, right?
Correct.
Okay. So why don't we, why don't we, um, go to the vacancies?
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dawn, uh, for the introduction. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jorge Segarra, your city auditor. Um, we have three brief slides that we're gonna, uh, walk through that will provide a little bit more context and detail regarding our current vacancy situation, which was, uh, brought to the city council a few months ago, uh, when management partners did their operational efficiency, uh, results. Uh, the information that is before you is as of April 11, 2020, and, uh, what it shows is our total number of vacancies, uh, in the city, which is approximately 797, uh, full-time equivalent positions, uh, which is budgeted at a little over $41 million. When management partners did their analysis, they did a very high-level analysis, and part of their assumptions was that if out of the 800 positions or so that we were looking at that were vacant, you were to assume that half of them were potentially, uh, candidates for freezing or not filling or elimination, that you could save approximately $20 million. And although that math is accurate, actually implementing that type of a strategy is a bit more complex, and, uh, this information, uh, hopes to illustrate how complex that actual implementation would, would be. So, uh, in this first slide, I would like to go over a few things that, uh, in our collaborative effort in working with the finance department and, uh, city manager's office and obviously my office, uh, we've concluded should be adjusted out of this analysis to arrive at a more realistic, uh, number of positions that we should focus on. And so the first adjustment that we made was to set aside those positions that were associated with non-general fund vacancies. Those are positions that are associated in essence with our enterprise funds, and that's approximately 200 full-time equivalents. And that leaves us with approximately 600 positions that would be general fund vacancies. From that figure, we then think that it's reasonable to adjust out vacancies that are tied to non-budgeted positions. The adjustment for non-budgeted positions, we believe, is necessary because those positions in reality aren't really vacant. Uh, those positions are filled with a non-budgeted position somewhere else in their respective organization. And therefore, if those positions that are vacant were to be eliminated, you in essence would be laying off over 104, uh, employees of the city of Sacramento. Another adjustment that we made was to set aside, uh, vacancies that were associated with positions that were 100% offset, uh, by non-general fund sources. Um, those would be things like, uh, non, non-general fund revenues, um, or, uh, grants and things of that nature. There were approximately 120 FTEs associated with that. We also set aside swarm public safety positions and fire recruit positions, which are in essence our academy positions for the fire department, as, uh, it is a priority of the city council to continue to maintain our, uh, public safety resources. And then the last adjustment that we made was to set aside, uh, those positions that had been approved by the, because they served a critical function. That was 17 positions. So the net vacancies after those positions have been set aside is approximately 293 FTEs, uh, which is budgeted at approximately $15 million. The next two slides will provide similar information, but in greater detail regarding those categories that we spoke to, uh, and how those positions fall into the various city departments that operate in the city of Sacramento. As you can see, this information in greater detail gives you a little bit more of a sense of how, uh, those particular categories could potentially impact individual departments throughout the city. You can, uh, go to the next slide, please. In this final slide, which I think, um, uh, highlights some of the things that, uh, are remaining for us to be able to gather additional information on, uh, are the net vacancies as of April 11, with that additional detail by department. One of the things that I would like to highlight on this particular slide is that, as you can see here, obviously, the impact is potentially would be felt throughout the entire city organization, uh, if these vacancies were to be used as a cost control measure. Uh, of particular notice, if you, uh, look to the bottom of the table, you'll see that almost 200 of the FTEs that have been, uh, identified here in our net vacancies are associated with our youth parks and community enrichment. And so, um, that too, I think, provides a, a sense of the potential impact to key services that the city, uh, currently provides or would plan to provide. So that is the information that we wanted to, uh, provide the city council as an update to the progress that we've made in analyzing the vacancy information. There is additional work that needs to be done in regards to gathering information about the potential impact that these positions would have, should you choose to freeze them further or to consider the elimination of some of these positions. Um, Dawn and, uh, Shelley, uh, from our finance department and from our HR are available to speak a little bit further about the next steps in gathering that impact information.
All right, please, um.
Shelley.
Shelley? Thanks, Robinson.
Yes. So we have asked all departments to evaluate all their vacancies. Um, the data was due to us last Friday, and it will, they're going to determine what impacts it will have to programs and services, and we will be able to bring this data back to council, we hope, by early June for your evaluation.
All right. Anything else you want to add, Dawn, Ms. Home?
No, that, that is the plan. This is the conclusion of our budget presentation. We have staff from all the departments on the line. We're happy to answer any questions council might have. And at the conclusion, we would ask for a motion to approve the budget that takes us into July of this year.
All right. I know I have some questions on the vacancy question, but I'm going to let the members go first. Um, I know Councilmember Shinir wanted to ask some questions. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so first, I want to thank, um, Dawn and Jorge, all of the folks who worked on this. I think this is a major step forward in helping us understand what's going on here. Um, I, we, I got a briefing today, which was great. I, I think that, you know, at this point in time, it's difficult to make a lot of judgments about this because, without the impact. Um, two-thirds of the positions of the FTE, two-thirds of the FTE are in YPSI and have a really big impact on summer programs, which we talked about or I talked about earlier today. Um, and so I appreciate that there's another level of work to do, and I've asked for kind of the detail behind those numbers of what those folks do. We can't wait until the early June to understand what we're going to do with, with the YPSI positions, because if they are, if half of them are more with summer programs, those are decisions, again, we have to make. Otherwise, what we're doing is just giving over and saying, we'll let the budget dictate what we're doing in that way. Um, this is really a policy decision for the council. So while I recognize the importance of what we've done so far, without that other half of the information, um, we're looking at something that doesn't, that we, we can't really judge. There's no, there's no basis for us to say these are good things or bad things or what the impact will be. Um, so that's where I am, and I'm hoping, and I would ask, I guess, Dawn, if there's a way to get us the, the information on YPSI sooner, uh, than early June, because if we wait till early June, we might as well wait till next year.
We do have the data. We can be, I will be working with the city manager to figure out the next steps on bringing that information back, and, um, I'm sure we can look at a way of carving out the parks, or parks positions and bringing it back so that you understand the impact by program.
Okay. And I think, you know, probably more than any of the other positions, this is COVID-related, right? Because if we can't run the programs, then we should keep the positions empty, uh, or vacant and do something else with the money to figure out other folks who can serve young people over the summer. So that's just as a, uh, forewarning, that's where my head is. Um, it's just a critical piece for the city, as far as I'm concerned.
Councilmember Shinir, um, I think what we can do is take a look at those vacancies, the 293 vacancies or 771, um, uh, individuals, and prioritize those and have that come back maybe in the two-week timeframe that we're planning on coming back with an update on our process for the COVID funding.
That would be great.
Towards that, uh, that goal.
Okay, thanks.
Um, thank you. I know I called on Councilmember Shinir first. Usually, when everybody's here, we take the public comment first. And so with, with, uh, permission, I think we'll shift to that and then get back to, um, the queue of members who are lined up. Vice Mayor Harris, Getta, Hanson, and Ashby. We'll take one more member first. Okay, why don't we go Vice Mayor Harris, and then we'll shift to the public testimony. We're not quite ready. There are no calls? Oh, I was told that there were three calls, and that's okay.
So we're on item 18, and there's no, there's no callers on item 18. I apologize for that.
That's all right. All right. We'll go right back to the members, then.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dawn.
Got it. Uh, so one thing I wanted to point out on the slide that's up right now, in the 10, uh, employee count FTE positions in the city manager's office, and that isn't that, were the extra employees that were slated to be hired to get on the economic development team to have advisors for various areas of the city. And I point that out because several of my constituents, principally in the Northgate neighborhood, have asked, when are we going to have this employee to work with? Because they feel it's very important to them. I just wanted to point out that at this juncture, we are holding those positions open until we understand the impacts and start making decisions about what is, uh, most important to the city with our limited resources moving forward. And also, I agree with Jay that we need to make a decision about YPSI and, um, the various positions there, like landscape and learning, you know, things that are important to youth, that do make a big difference. And we are up against quite a few decisions about where to spend our limited resources. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next was, uh, Councilman Getta.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, uh, thank you Jorge and Dawn for, uh, and all the staff for a great presentation. Um, again, I'd, I'd like to know earlier as well, uh, on our youth employment, uh, youth, uh, YPSI employees, so that we can figure out how to adapt to the need for youth over the summer. I think that there's causing a lot of, of stress over what's going to happen during the, the summer timeframe particularly, uh, now that many of the school programs are closed. Um, I had a question for the, uh, the capital improvement program. Uh, Mr. Uh, city manager, or Dawn, or, or Chris Cosomania, who, if you can, um, please, uh, give me an update. I know we were looking at the Station 10 upgrades, both the ceiling, uh, indoor, indoor components, and living conditions, and so I'm concerned about, uh, where we are on this project, because unlike other facilities, like people living in this, uh, facility, firefighters, and so, um, my understanding is it's not in this CIP right now? Is it only deferred for 60 days, or what's the status there?
Councilmember Gara, that project is not affected by the project scrub we're working on. The seven and a half million that we closed in part, or that the manager's working on closing, is all related to projects that are completed and are in final warranty, or we received alternative funding for them. And so those are the only ones we're closing And so those are the only ones we're closing right now, and none of the fire projects are in the hold project bucket either. So those are still going forward. We can work with facility maintenance to get you an update on the status of that, unless, I don't know if Hector's on and knows, but.
Yeah. Before this, right, I think it was like the week of that we did the stay-at-home order, I think I'd gotten an update about improvements at Station 10, and it seemed to me that those were going to move forward this way. And it's a building that is in line behind 14 and 4, so there's going to be a long time before we actually get to reconsider. People are going to be living in there still, so I'm concerned about that. Is there anybody from Fire that can discuss where we are on that?
James, are you on the line by chance?
This is Ryan Moore. I'm on the line. Fire Station 10 improvements are in the queue. They are absolutely programmed, and we hope to knock those out before the end of the calendar year.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate that. Those are the, I think those are the bulk of my comments here. I just want to thank, you know, the staff for, you know, taking on a hard budget when we have very little information, and we're going to, I think, I think we're going to see ourselves looking at this budget over and over more often than not, and I don't think there's anything wrong with having a monthly look at our budget, because we don't know what the economy is going to look like as this stay-at-home order is lifted and how we reopen again in our city. With that, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to all the staff who gave proof.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the staff first for all the hard work. I know Dawn and Laney and Shelley, Jorge, everybody's been working very hard to make sure that this budget is as realistic as possible. I do, just picking up on what Councilmember Gara was just mentioning, want to bring up the fact that I do believe we're going to have to revisit this in 60 days to 90 days, just to ensure that we are staying true to what revenues are coming in and what demands are being placed. But overall, Howard, I think your team has done a very good job, and I don't believe anybody's made a motion, but I will open and close the public hearing and move to adopt the budget, which this may be record time for an early budget.
Thank you, Steve.
Very good. Pro Tim Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you know, thank you to our staff. You gave us a run for our money with this agenda in terms of how much we had to read. A lot of pages this week, but I think I made my way through it okay. I would echo the sentiment of Councilmember Chenier. I would be not prepared to support sweeping the positions. I too am concerned about the impacts on summer programs. I've already heard from some constituents who are asking questions about the summer programs, like Oasis and those other camps and things. Obviously, we don't know yet with COVID how we'll handle it, but we do know that we will have childcare needs for essential city workers, and we are using some of the people from those programs that would come up in the summer, that would be switching back and forth from fourth R to summer programs for the essential city workers. So it might just be that we are expanding that. In that same sort of train of thought, Dawn, I did want to make sure, when we sort of, we call them the vacancies, but, and I know that early on, we had made a distinction that the vacancies would be all non-public safety, but I haven't heard that mentioned. Is that still the case? Or do we have public safety sweeps in here as well?
There are no sworn sweeps in the 293 position.
Okay, no sworn.
We did reserve those out.
Okay. So there could be some, but they'd be admin, not sworn positions. Okay, just making sure. And then, then lastly, I just wondered, Dawn, as you come back to us, and I agree with Jay, we don't want to adopt a budget that then dictates policy. We want to have the policies in place first. And so as we look at those summer positions and how we want to handle the Parks Department's vacancies, I guess my, my thought for you is what would be the difference between sweeping these vacancies? And maybe, based on COVID, there might be some positions potentially that we could just freeze for a bit, but not necessarily sweep. Obviously, then, we could only use the funds for as long as the item is frozen, but that might give us an opportunity to redirect some of the funds that could be used for some of these positions down the road to instead help us with COVID, and then there may be others yet still that we can sweep entirely, as the Mayor and management partners have suggested, to then, you know, help with our budget. So what, can you, as you come back, give us an idea of a split on that as well?
I believe we'll be coming back with recommendations. There may be some positions we recommend sweeping, but a lot of them, there may be recommendations just to freeze it, as you and several of the members have talked to us about. Freezing those and reserving those resources, just like we did the 3.6 million in the budget. We can increase that number, hold that as a placeholder to be able to manage, and then hold those vacancies until we know more about the impact of this entire pandemic.
Okay. I think that's great. And then just lastly, for me, you know, this is a really non-controversial budget. It is, you know, pretty basic, and that's a sign of the times that we're in, and Councilmember Hanson's right, that's the earliest I can ever remember adopting a budget as well, especially without any real fanfare. But I'm proud of our city and I'm proud of our Council for moving something forward and allowing us room to serve the public in whatever ways we may need to. And while we certainly didn't see it coming, and it's certainly not why we passed it, Measure U is going to prove to be, I think, the difference maker for Sacramento here, and how we can move forward. And I'm just really grateful that we have those funds to work with. So my thanks to the electorate for voting for Measure U and really ultimately investing in our city. So that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Was there any other member in the queue? Okay, I want to just ask a question about the vacancies, because I agree that sweeping the youth vacant positions when summer's coming and those positions are intentionally intended for summer programs, even though we know that it, summer programming may look different, that would be a mistake. But I want to just do the math here, just because I think it's important for the council and public to know, if for the sake of discussion, you were to exempt or hold on to all of the YIPSY positions, what would be the value, the budget value, of the remaining vacant positions, net vacant positions, that are on the bottom half of the list?
Mayor, we would have to take the 3.6 off of the top of, so we have the 15.2 million. We would remove the 6.2, and then we already have assumed savings of 3.6.
What's the net?
So that would leave you with about $5.4 million.
Okay. Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to get to. And so there are a lot of choices to be made here, and maybe we won't need every YIPSY position if the nature of the youth programming changes. But the point I want to make, and the reason why this exercise was both painful, but I think necessary, and a big thank you, again, to the City Manager's team, the budget team, Jorge's team, everybody, you know, we took this nub of a controversy, if you will, is what defines a vacancy, and you really worked well and hard together to come up with something that is digestible and that allows us to actually make the decision. So thank you. It's really, really good work. What I want to point out here is that we may be living, we're going to be living maybe in lean times for a while, aside from the 89 million we talked about this afternoon. And $5 million is a real amount of money. And that when we come back with this analysis from the departments about what the value is of leaving those positions vacant, by the way, we might ask, how long have they been vacant? We have to, I think, remember that while there may be some justification, and in some cases, compelling justification, to not eliminate the positions or not even freeze them, if we don't do one or the other, then we are giving up on $5 million of potential investment in youth programs and all of the other things that too often, you know, get shorted when it comes to our budget. So this is, I know, wonky stuff and, you know, budget line items and all that, and vacant positions, but it actually really, really matters. And so I just want to make sure that we're weighing that when the report from the department comes up, because it's an opportunity for us to, next year, remember, we project an $11 million deficit, and so that would be $5 million fewer cuts if we were to freeze and/or eliminate the positions. So we do have that flexibility, that choice between freezing and eliminating, which is good, too, because hopefully, the economic recovery will take hold sooner rather than later. I just want to say thank you to all the team, city team on the budget. I know this is not as interesting or exciting as a budget process or outcome as last year's, but it is still every bit as important. And as I said this afternoon, do not take for granted the fact that we are sitting here passing the earliest budget in memory, and we're not having to make cuts. Because I'm telling you, there are cities throughout the state and throughout the country that are in a very, very different position. And I too am thankful to the electorate for passing that full-scent Measure U, because it is saving us in many, in many respects. All right. We have a motion. What do we have?
We have a motion.
We have a motion, a second?
A second.
I need a second on the budget.
Second.
Second. Is Ashby? Okay. Let's call the roll on the 2020-21 budget, please.
To confirm, I had a motion by Councilmember Hanson and a second by Councilmember Ashby.
That's correct.
Ashby?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson?
Hi, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chenier?
Hi.
We're having sound difficulties again.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Gara?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
For the earliest budget in modern-time history? Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right. That is unanimous. Congratulations, and thank you again. But you're right, the members who said, we will undoubtedly be back at this iteratively, probably even before the mid-year. So good job, Mr. Manager, and your team, Dawn Holm, and your team, and my colleagues. Okay. Let's move now to the next item, and that is the Ad-Hoc Ordinance Streamlining the Planning Entitlement Process. Who is presenting on this?
My name is Garrett. We were going to have the Chair of the Planning Commission Ogilvy introduce this. Is she still here? Alex? She is.
I'm here. Hi, Garrett. Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Alex Ogilvy. I'm the current Chair of the Planning and Design Commission. I've been asked to provide some brief context around the streamlining ordinance. Apologies to those who attended the Law &amp; Ledge hearing last week, because we all sound very similar. I also want to clarify that I'm not authorized tonight to speak on behalf of the Planning Commission, and instead, just going to focus on the background around this particular ordinance. In fall 2018, some members of the Commission, including myself, participated in a self-funded trip to Portland, Oregon. This was organized by Commissioner Ron Connolly. Portland State's College of Urban and Public Affairs led the study tour, which lasted two and a half days. The intention there was to encourage a peer-to-peer knowledge exchange around sustainable urban development policy and best practices. We focused on a variety of topic areas like affordable housing, until development, downtown revitalization, commercial corridor revitalization, especially outside the central city, riverfront development, transit-oriented development, otherwise known as TODs, and buyright zoning. We also explored some transportation issues like parking, active transportation and transit. With the exception of myself and a few others, most of the study tour continued on to Seattle, Washington, where they looked at some affordable housing efforts there. The discussions we had around sustainable and equitable development during this experience led to the creation of an ad hoc committee that focused on changes in the structure and/or procedures of the Planning Commission. This committee, on which I participated, examined ways of streamlining quality developments and commercial corridors, TOD zones, and other innovative ideas to encourage long-term, smart, balanced, sustainable, and equitable growth in the city of Sacramento. After meeting over the course of a few months, the ad hoc committee presented its findings and recommendations to the Planning and Design Commission. In July 2019, the Commission passed a motion for staff to propose draft amendments to Title 17. These amendments would address streamlining certain developments and orienting the Commission towards one that's greater, with a greater focus on policy. In February 2020, the Commission heard amendments to Title 2 that related to the structure of the Planning Commission, design review process, mapping, and as well as proposed amendments to Title 17 related to streamlining and design. The Commission subsequently passed a motion to approve staff's recommendations with Commissioner comments. Some of the comments were concerned around the structure of the Commission, its size, appointment, qualifications of members, public input opportunities, and structure around the proposed Design Advisory Committee and the Director-level hearings. It's my understanding that these ordinance amendments were then redirected back to staff for reconsideration of the Planning and Design Commission. At the same time, the Commission created a new ad hoc committee, of which I'm also a member, that's tasked with providing recommendations for the Title 17 streamlining ordinance as it relates to the Title 2 amendments and the structure and scope of work of the Planning and Design Commission. The Title 17 amendments, and only those amendments, came back to the Commission April 23rd. The Commission then passed a motion to approve staff's recommendation with amendments to this section related to off-site consumption alcohol sales, and suggested that those use permits be heard at the Director-level hearings that will be held monthly in the evenings at Old City Hall. And with that, unless you have questions for me at this time, I think Garrett's going to continue with a presentation on the proposed ordinance. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much for your hard work and presentation. Is there another, I'm sorry, another part of the presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council. My name is Garrett Mormon, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department, and I am here to present on the Ad-Hoc Ordinance Streamlining the Planning Entitlement Process. I want to thank Chair Ogilvy for introducing this project, and I appreciate the work her and her colleagues have put into this effort. It has been a fun and rewarding collaboration. I'll begin and share my screen with the presentation. Okay. First, I want to acknowledge that supplemental material has been prepared for this item, which has been posted online and distributed to this Council. This ordinance requested for action tonight is only one component of a larger effort by the Planning Division to increase transparency and access to our planning process, while also providing a streamlined process for development projects that are consistent with all of the city's zoning requirements and design guidelines. The ordinance prioritizes housing and commercial development in our commercial corridors and mixed-use zones near transit with community-serving land uses such as assisted-living facilities, religious assemblies, and childcare centers. In general, the ordinance lowers the level of review for site plan and design review entitlements, tentative subdivision maps, and some conditional use permits. It does not lower the level of review for many other projects, such as rezones, general plan amendments, planned unit developments, gas stations, drive-throughs, mini-storage facilities, and bars or nightclubs. On the screen before you is a specific list of the targeted entitlements within the ordinance. It eliminates the automatic commission hearing requirement for site plan and design review entitlement if a project is of a certain size or height. It allows all deviations to development standards, such as a setback, to be heard at the Director- all deviations to development standards, such as a setback, to be heard at the Director Level. It allows alternative subdivision maps to be heard at the Director Level, and to delegate some conditional use permits to the Director Level and remove some CUP requirements in commercial zones. A list of those uses are up on the screen before you. As Commissioner Ogilvy stated, this project has been in the workings for quite some time. It first became introduced at a public forum on April 25 of 2019, when the Planning and Design Commission Ad Hoc Subcommittee reported out to the remainder of the Commission on their group discussion findings from their travels to Portland and Seattle. The project was then itemized at the Commission's July 25 hearing, where they made a motion to initiate the project. Staff later held a community meeting in early October at City Hall, which received good attendance and stakeholder representation from across the city. And later in October, the project was presented to the Preservation Commission for a review and comment. We have also had many informal conversations with stakeholders and individual community members related to this project, in which valued information was received and incorporated into many of the new procedures that I will be discussing here in a minute. After the outreach, this project began its formal public hearing procedure in February of this year, starting with the Planning and Design Commission. Also in February, we were instructed by Law &amp; Ledge to take it back to the Planning and Design Commission. It was later acknowledged that there are components of this ordinance that could help in the long-term recovery efforts from COVID-19, particularly for key building segments of our economy. Therefore, the Planning and Design Commission reconsidered this item a second time on April 23 of this year, and passed a motion recommending approval. It was last discussed at Law &amp; Ledge on April 28, where the committee forwarded a recommendation of approval. Throughout the process, we have heard both support and opposition. Those in support say the project will provide predictability to the process and reduce unexpected delays, therefore encouraging more investment and revitalization within our city. It supports construction of more housing units, and it facilitates new construction and occupancy of existing buildings that will help with long-term sustainable growth. Those in opposition express concerns to the Director Hearing location and time, and that staff report material should be provided in advance, that the ordinance will reduce the public's ability to participate in decisions, that the ordinance will impact the city's historic neighborhoods, that the city's design guidelines are too subjective to allow for lower-level review, and that the appeals of some decisions will only go to the Planning and Design Commission, which is a particular concern for CUPs involving alcohol sales for off-site consumption. As I previously mentioned, the ordinance is only one component of this project, which is backed by many new improvements to provide greater public access to the planning process. The first thing we already began is installing new real estate-style signs for all pending new development. This sign pictured there on the right is an early notice sign that will go, go up almost immediately after the project is submitted to the city, and will remain in place until the planning process is finished. This sign will include a project description and contact information for the assigned staff planner and the developer. The next step is to implement a Design Advisory Committee, which would be appointed by the Planning Director and consist of licensed architects and landscape architects. This committee would assist staff in commenting on design in the early stages of a project to better inform overall project design. We have heard from the community that they would like to participate in the Design Advisory Process. As a result, staff will be providing a recommended comment deadline date on the new real estate signs and on our project routing sheet, so the community's comments can be shared with the Design Advisory Committee and other city staff at the time when it is best to be commenting on these projects. All of the recommendations made by the committee will become public record and will be included as analysis in our staff reports. We also heard from the community that the Director Hearings are at inconvenient, are at a inconvenient time and location, and that the staff report material is not provided ahead of time. Staff understands this concern and has decided to hold one evening Director Hearing per month in Historic City Hall that can be utilized for the bigger projects. Staff will also be developing a process for making staff report materials available online in advance of the Director Hearings. Also, as part of the Planning Commission's motion, as Alex had mentioned, they requested that the alcohol CUPs be heard at these evening Director Hearings, which staff will do. We also heard the importance it is to have community meetings on some projects. Staff has included as part of your supplemental packet, new city code language to be codified into Title 17 that allows any Councilmember or the Mayor, at their discretion, to require the developer to attend a community meeting. Lastly, staff has realized how important it is to make the planning process as understandable as possible, in which we have several new items coming forward to increase our online presence. For example, we are preparing improved information to put on our website to help inform the public on our process and how to best participate, like the flowchart on the screen before you. This is an example of a visual that can help explain the planning process in a more understandable format. To conclude, staff will be providing an annual report back to the Planning and Design Commission on the efficacy of this ordinance and the new procedures established with it. This will provide a public forum for the commissioners and the public to participate in the discussion to help us determine where improvements should be made. Staff is recommending the Council adopt the ordinance attached to the staff report, including the new city code language that allows the Council to require a community meeting. I appreciate everyone's time this evening, and I am here with Greg, Tom, and Stacia to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I know we've got a number of Councilmembers on the way in, but we also have public testimony. And so why don't we take the public testimony first? How many people do we have in queue?
I believe we have five callers in queue at this time.
Okay. Please.
Thank you.
I know it takes a few seconds. I'm sorry.
Transferring the caller in now. I want to remind viewers that you need to turn down any audio that you're watching the meeting on. Welcome to the Council Meeting. You have two minutes to address the Council. Caller on item 19, you have two minutes to address the Council. Caller, can you hear us? It seems like you're having technical difficulties. Can you hear me? Please turn down any audio that you're watching the Council Meeting on, and please make your comments now. Caller, please turn off your audio and then call back into the queue. Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the Council. Caller, can you hear us? Please mute any audio that you're watching the meeting from. Caller, it appears you're having technical difficulties. Please hang up and call back into the queue once you've muted any audio. Welcome to the Council Meeting. You have two minutes to address the Council. Caller, you have two minutes to address the Council.
Hello. Luck, let's go to the next caller, please.
So turn down your audio. Please hang up and call back into the meeting and participate through your telephone. Next caller, please. Just one moment. Hopefully, we get a caller next.
Okay.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the Council. Caller, can you hear us? It appears we're having technical difficulties. Will you hang up and call back into the queue? We can take Council comments and then come back and check.
Okay, why don't, why don't we reverse it this time? That's fine. We'll get this all squared away. Councilmember Hanson, you were up first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Alex Ogilvy for presenting from the Planning Commission tonight. I want to say, I think this is one of the first times I've seen at least the Planning Commission bring forward an idea on its own, spend their own money to travel out of town to study an issue, and then to really work over a long period of time to bring us recommendations. A lot of times, the ordinances that we review through planning, they've started either in the Council, in the staff, or in the community. And this is really a remarkable show of their dedication to Sacramento by devoting so much of their personal time, energy, and money. I wanted just to start first by saying, my Commissioner Todd Kaufman has kept me in the loop on this during the process, and he has, has really explained why they wanted to suggest this. And Garrett didn't show a chart, but I have seen a chart either at Law &amp; Ledge or previously, of the number of projects that are non-controversial that come through the Planning Commission process. And I think after looking at the number of projects that really get no changes and essentially are non-controversial, they wanted to revise this process so that the emphasis really is on the policy decisions, you know, whether it's the general plan, or zoning, or other rules, so that projects that follow those rules, don't ask for any deviations, are not controversial, can have more certainty in their approval. I think that there is a lot of information out there, some of it misinformation, and some of it just honest misunderstandings about what this ordinance will do. I've responded to constituents because they've seen various things floating around. And, and I think it's really important that we very clearly just articulate that this is not for controversial projects. This is really for projects that have played by the rules. And so to subject them to additional costs, additional time, additional opportunities for people, frankly, a lot of times, just to extend what otherwise would be a good project for a neighborhood, particularly infill projects. I think this does the right thing. The, the old process will still apply for controversial projects or projects that need deviations, things that go beyond height limits, affect historic resources, otherwise trigger more substantial reviews. And a lot of times, this planning and development process is mysterious. And so I really think that the staff have done good work responding to the comments they've heard from the community so far. I'm particularly pleased with the early routing of applications, the posting of signs on sites. I think that gives the community an opportunity to follow what's going on, and to know where, where things might be changing and what's happening. And a lot of times where we see projects happening, it's vacant lots that are subject to illegal dumping, other problems. And we want to see those lots that have been vacant get appropriate infill projects in them. And I think this ordinance does help with that a lot. And it, it really furthers transparency in many ways. I think what it also does is allows the community to engage in the process at a very early point. A lot of times, engagement in a project comes at the last minute, which costs more time, money, and really, I think, causes a lot of animosity between various stakeholders in the process. So if we can accelerate that input to the beginning, as Garrett was talking about, Mr. Norman, I think it would be very helpful at easing some of those conversations. And indeed, Mr. Carr's request for the option for a meeting, I think, also adds to that ability to create a better relationship dynamic. I will say that one of the things that the community has reached out about that I think probably should be removed from this ordinance, and I'm prepared to talk more about that, but the alcohol CUP, I think, is something that touches on a lot of communities, has very strong feelings. And I discussed this at Law &amp; Ledge, but the state issues the license, but in certain areas, a CUP is required. And because of the concerns about secondary effects, I do think that for the purposes of today, we should remove the alcohol CUP from this streamlining effort, leave the others as they are. But I also believe we should check back in on this in some, at some period after implementation, so that, you know, usually Councilmember Chenier has the perfect timeline to come back for a staff report. I don't know if that's 90 days or something longer than that, six months.
Steve, if I can say, the Planning Commission's already asking for it to come back after a year. I don't know if you want to do it quicker than that, but we could do it concurrent with the Planning Commission.
That's, that's fine with me. I think that the big issue, though, right now, as we face into the abyss of COVID, is many of these projects that so much time and energy has gone into, the economics of them have changed dramatically. I know many neighborhoods look forward to those vacant lots getting filled in. And when it's another two or three years for them to get filled in, this sends a message to people who may want to do a project that at least the city won't add to the woes, that the neighborhood will, will have a chance to participate in the project's development and the submission process, and that ultimately, we're oriented around better decision-making. And so I, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance, removing the alcohol CUP streamlining, and to have it come back to the Council. I think simultaneous or approximate with the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission may want to be just prior to Council. But overall, this is a very good ordinance. There's a lot of people who have seen, think this is a bad thing because they don't understand it, or there are other things going on. But I do think that ultimately, this helps with our housing crisis. This helps with many of the challenges around the city that we hear about regularly, and so I'm very proud to support it.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Hanson, did you open the public hearing?
Open and close the public hearing, move the item with those, removal of the CUP and the report back simultaneous with the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
We, we're going to hear from the public. Yeah. Let's go through the remaining Council members here. Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would just like to start by thanking Garrett Norman. He is, I don't agree with this policy, and I don't like what it does for the city, but that's not a reflection of how I feel about Garrett or the planning team, Tom Pace and Garrett and his team. I get to work with them on lots and lots of things, and they are wonderful employees. And I think the city of Sacramento is so well-served by you, Garrett. So you did a great job with presenting this, and I'm not, I'm not in favor of it tonight, but please don't take that as a statement against you or Tom or your team's efforts. Same holds true with the Planning Commission. I think it's great that the Planning Commission took the time to go up to Portland on their own dime, did some research, brought back some, some thoughts, and some of the things in here are, are good. I find it a bit offensive that Councilmember Hanson says that some people don't agree with it because they don't understand it. Pretty sure I understand it. I feel confident that I can read through this policy and figure it out all by myself. And I think many other people could, too, and come to a different conclusion than you have, which is that it silences communities. I do not believe that this increases community participation. I think you have all received a letter from former Mayor Heather Fargo, who also agrees that this does not increase public participation. I think she's pretty capable of reading policy as well, and figuring out how it will impact the city of Sacramento. But let's start with the very entry-level issue here. I don't understand why we, as a Council, are even talking about this or taking this on this agenda item. We spent the first 10 minutes trying to get the phones to even work. We had five callers in the queue. We couldn't even get them queued up. God bless Maria and Mindy and everybody else trying so hard to make public comment work. This is ridiculous. We're in a million different locations, and I think we're doing a great job, given the circumstances. But there's a reason why we said at the outset of these Zoom meetings that we weren't going to take items that weren't COVID-related or urgent. And this is neither. It started long before COVID. It's a discussion around transforming how we do our planning process later. There's nothing you could say to me that would make me believe that changing how There's nothing you could say to me that would make me believe that changing how alcohol permits go through our process is going to help us with COVID. So this is not urgent and could wait until we were all back in the chambers and the community could be present, sitting in the chairs in front of us and sharing their thoughts and opinions with us. Right now, people are busy, very, very busy, dealing with their own issues and their own problems and how COVID is impacting their families. I will be quite honest with you, it was extremely difficult for me to get through just this council agenda. On Thursday, it was given to us, here's, here's the last items-reading materials, and here's this items-reading materials. I'm sure everyone read every single page of those thousands of pages on those two items alone, that doesn't include the consent calendar or the two council meetings we had before this that started at 1:00 today. How would you expect people to be educated and have read through all of this and contribute? Everyone doesn't participate in Law &amp; Ledge, everyone on this council doesn't even participate in Law &amp; Ledge. So I think that that is a big mistake, and I think we'll hear about it for a long time. And I, I know from comments last week that it sounds like there's a lot of support for this measure, but I don't think there's a lot of support in the community. Every letter that we received in our packet is from a business district or someone representing a developer or a developer themselves. I did not get letters from neighborhood association leaders in support. I did not get a letter from anyone on preservation Sacramento in support. In fact, all of those groups wrote letters against. The advocates out in the community are against this, and whether that's because they don't understand it or because they want refinements to it, is what we should discover in a very good council meeting in our chambers where people are talking to each other. I think pulling the alcohol CUP off is a good move, but it doesn't fix this ordinance. It doesn't make it so that people get the attention that they need for their community. And I think that that's, that really says a lot about us as a group, if we would move forward without including them. I can't imagine a time that anyone would want to be on this council and be a council member and not want to weigh in on where alcohol goes in their district or where 150 apartment units would go. I don't even know how many of you have units big enough for 150. I know South Natomas has the largest apartment complexes in the city, and North Natomas is getting some, and District 8 has some. And they take a lot of work, a lot of work to manage more than 150 people living in one space. And to not be able to be involved in that process because it's exempted is ridiculous. In fact, it would almost make more sense if the ordinance read that units under 150 were exempted from, from this. But this is over 150. I can't imagine a time where a project would come into my district and I don't care what it looks like, I don't care what the design is. And some of the things that you have exempted for commercial zones conflict with each other. I would not probably put my child in a childcare center next to a kennel. And when you say residential facilities that people can live in, and you're talking about residential care facilities, that is also probably not a great neighbor for childcare. I know we want to streamline childcare, I know we want more childcare facilities, but there's a reason why we have a CUP on it, and it is about keeping the kids safe. Jeff Harris and the River District exempted themselves from the residential component, which I understand, and there's probably good reason for that, because the River District is inundated with residential care facilities. But if it can, if that's your rationale for the River District to not have it, why then would you line it up in places where it could go next to childcare? You also have dormitories in there, so you could potentially have dormitories next to kennels. I promise you, that's going to be an issue. So some of the issues that you have put in here are not compatible with each other, and yet would have a lower level of review and very little community input, and I think that is a big mistake. The CUPs that don't allow the council member or the Planning Commission to weigh in early on tentative maps is a huge mistake. Again, I know not many of you have new development, some of you do, tentative maps are everything. I go weeks and weeks and months sometimes with developers talking about those tentative maps. Why? Because the first thing that happens is where the roads go, where the parks will go, how large will the lot lines be. I would never want to pump that to a zoning administrator. I want to be involved in that, I want the council to be involved in that, and I want the Planning Commission to be involved in that. And by the way, the fact that we could still be involved but that there wouldn't be a public hearing takes away all of the carrot that's at the end of that developer to work with the community out of concern for how a Planning Commission meeting is going to go. So if you're going to take that away, you're basically telling a developer they don't need to worry about what the Planning Commission vote is going to be, they only have to worry about a zoning commissioner. They don't have to worry about council or, or the Planning Commission unless one of us calls it up. There's a reason that the Historic Preservation Group opposes this so vehemently. It's not good for historic preservation, it's not because they don't understand. Site plan and design review on 150 units is critically important, I just can't even imagine handing that over. The development tracker that this ordinance suggests that we use instead does not work. We may be suggesting here in this ordinance that we're going to pour money into it and that it's going to be better, and that when people go on, when they see new development, they go put in the address and it'll tell them what the new development is. It would be great if that is how the development tracker worked, it is not. It is extremely difficult to pull projects off of that tracker, and it's even more difficult to pull down the design drawings from that tracker. Often, it doesn't even work. When the Sacramento Kings submitted their proposal, no one could open it, we had to print copies, the Kings and me, we all had to print copies for the community to be able to come and pick up, and hundreds and hundreds of people engaged in that process. You would be taking that away because they wouldn't have the ability to access those site plans that are so important, or to even find a development project in that tracker unless we, we make light-speed gains on what that looks like. Signs posted at the site, like real estate signs, for sale signs, I have a lot of new development in my district, a lot. A sign out in the middle of a field somewhere does no good. And sending notices to the people that live within 300 feet is almost equally absurd. And the fact that our, our new way of doing more than sending one note to each of those homes is to send more than one note of each home, that's what this policy says. Instead of sending one letter to each of the 300 homes within the close proximity to the project, we'll send one to every person who lives in that home. I don't see how that makes things any better or more transparent, it, it, it does not. And you miss a lot of people that way. And if you, don't believe me, talk to anyone that lived within 300 feet of the Panhandle, they all said that none of them ever got notices. So I know we send them out, I've seen them, but they don't always make their way to the people in those homes. The meeting management that is suggested would come in to also help this, I think is, is a pretty big challenge. I already showed you how many pages we had to read just for today, that's two items. Meeting management is something that I hear every single time we talk about streamlining, and yet it never happens. I do appreciate the Planning Commission going to Portland, but let's talk about Portland for a minute. Their structure of governance is nothing like ours. It's a strong mayor system, the council members are elected citywide, at the top of each department is a council member. Like the mayor, if Darrell was mayor of Portland, he would appoint each of us to run a different department. So Councilmember Carr may be appointed to be the head of planning. And Councilmember Carr would be elected citywide. So at the top of that department is not an assistant city manager, it's a council member who's elected citywide, who's accountable to the people. We don't have that same system here. And I think to ignore that is, is also not fair. Some people have mentioned over the last two weeks that the items selected in this proposal are non-controversial. I've been on this council for 10 years, and every item that is listed in here as an exemption at one point or another has been controversial. It just depends on the item, and it depends on what the community thinks about that item and where that item is going. So to blanket assume on the front end that no kennel and no 150-unit apartment complex and no childcare center and no residential care facility, how long did we spend on the residential care facility in District 2? That took forever. And how many, how much involvement was there from the community? Ultimately, we passed it because it was the right thing to do, but we needed to address the community's concerns. The project got better because the community was engaged. This policy decreases public involvement, it tells the community that we don't need their engagement. And you may not think that it does that, but I am telling you, as the person who deals with a lot of new growth and a lot of projects, this takes away the voice of the community. And it hamstrings us as council members and makes it more difficult to provide for our constituents what they want conveyed to developers as they bring projects forward. So my first ask really, Mayor, is of you and Howard in considering putting this item off or over until we can have a council meeting in a chamber where people can actually participate and we're not fumbling around with phones and trying to figure out if we've reached everyone. And if the council is just not willing to do that, then I am going to vote no tonight, and I, and I'm very concerned, and when this item comes back, and I will ask for it to be reconsidered, because I don't think this is going to end well for the city of Sacramento. And I can't imagine a scenario where weakening the Planning Commission, weakening council members, and weakening the voice of the community is the right thing to do.
So are there other members that want to speak on this item? Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I, I have a lot to say about this item. I think it would be instructive if we did get public comment before we continued council member comments, if that's all right with you.
That's fine, why don't we hear from members of the public? Are we ready?
So, Mr. Mayor, we're going to connect with the first caller, give them instructions to turn down their audio, and then we'll patch them through.
Okay.
They're being transferred in. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, caller.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm opposed to this stop proposed ordinance.
What's your name?
Eric Bauer.
Okay.
And I'm in District 6. And I think the city is very adverse to public comment in general. And different, different times I've tried to public comment, it seems like they've been ignored pretty much. But I think that this is like a very bad step in the wrong direction, especially because I care about historical preservation. And I think this will adversely affect people that care about historical preservation. So I'm going to yield the remainder of my time and let you get to other commenters. I would like to say one thing to Mayor Cuppy. I was, like I called in before and we all got hung up on, I think, but that's just, that's probably out of order right now, so I'm in my comments, bye-bye.
Yeah, it was, we're still figuring out the technology here, so it was inadvertent, but I'm glad you got back in and everybody who got disconnected, for whatever reason, just call back and we will, we will take your testimony, all right? What is next, who's next?
Thank you for your comments, this is City Clerk Cuppy, and we did work through those technical difficulties, we believe. So thank you for your call. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council. Caller, can you hear us? Please turn any audio devices off, and you have two minutes to address the council. It appears we're having technical difficulties. Let's see, we have another caller on queue. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Chris Smith, and I'm here on behalf of the Associated General Contractors of California. We represent over 1,000 prime, sub, and specialty contractor members statewide, and we're here to speak in support of the streamlining and planning entitlement process. If you recall, and I know this feels like years ago, but back in January, Sacramento was still going through its economic renaissance. However, as we all saw, the impact of COVID-19, it hit our communities, it hit hard and fast. We'd like to take a moment to thank council and, and Mr. Mayor for your efforts in keeping construction moving forward during this time. Because of your efforts, Sacramento is well-positioned to come out of this crisis stronger than ever. If you walk around downtown, you can see cranes building new offices and foundations being set up for multifamily units and single-family units. However, we risk losing all of that momentum if we don't continue to innovate and improve our city's building process. Currently, the entitlement process, it's one of the most time-consuming and expensive components in the development of new projects. The process combined with the upfront cost of entitlements can be the deciding factor whether or not to move forward with construction. If we want to become a more competitive city, we've got to do everything in our power to reduce unexpected delays, encourage investments in revitalization, and facilitate long-term sustainable growth. This ordinance, written, as written, takes a real common sense approach to delegating authority in a responsible manner. We really do urge the council to approve of this ordinance as written and look forward to move these types of solutions in the future. And again, on behalf of the Associated General Contractors, we thank you for your time on this.
Okay, thank you very much, next.
Next caller, please. Okay, we got a transfer error on that one, do we have another caller in the queue you can put through? Welcome to the meeting, please mute any audio equipment you have, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, this is Jameson Parker with the Midtown Association. This has been a really fun ride so far. I'll be very brief, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak on item 19 this evening. I know everybody's had a long day already. I just wanted to express our wholehearted support for the development streamlining ordinance. I think more now than ever, we need to do everything possible to streamline our, our development process to deliver housing that our community is desperately needing. We support this item for many reasons, but one example why this makes sense over, for passages, that over the last three years, Sacramento has really undergone many efforts to develop a more prescribed and fair development process in the central city, and more wide than that. This work includes the central city-specific plan, as well as a very robust historic district plan, which really took into account prescribing and putting in consistent and fair design guidelines, and had really built the map to inform the building design, scale, mapping, and most importantly, how to build a project that has community contact. This ordinance before you, in this evening, really builds upon these efforts and now takes those processes that have built consistency for developing, making it easier to understand and allowing for a reduced hearing process for projects that meet some of those basic development standards. I just want to conclude by thanking city staff and the Planning Design Commission in drafting of this ordinance. I believe that their processes have been very inclusive and responsive, and I strongly urge an I vote on this item, thank you.
Very good, thank you, are there any other callers?
Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi there, greetings, Mayor and council, my name is Ansel Lundberg, I'm with House Sacramento, we're a Yimby group, yes in my backyard in Sacramento. I'm also wanting to say thank you to Clerk Cuppy for figuring out the queue system. I just wanted to share House Sacramento's strong support for this measure. We think staff and the Planning Commission have done a great job in developing this proposal, it's taken a long and thorough process to be developed, and we, we believe that it's a strong and necessary effort to streamline approvals for multifamily housing in Sacramento. I also just want to say we are an all-volunteer organization made up of passionate Yimby's across Sacramento, and most of us are renters, and we are in support of this. We believe it actually improves transparency. And lastly, you know, the general plan process is what the council takes part in in order to plan for the city's growth, and a streamlining process like this is sort of the process by which the general plan is implemented, and so there's no reason to hold up projects that fit with the general plan. So finally, just want to say thank you, and we do support this item.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next caller, please. We do have two more in the queue. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, hi, good evening, Mayor, this is Mike Barnbaum in District 2. Yes. Hi. Good evening, Mayor. This is Mike Barnbaum in District 2. I want to speak on item 19. I'm very concerned about this item. I think it does take away from public participation. I think it does make it easier for things like alcohol establishments to be approved. And this really needs to be a matter that needs to be tabled once we get past the COVID-19 pandemic, and be a matter that be held in the council chamber, even if that means that the public can attend while wearing personal protective equipment modifications. I'm fine with that. But I think having it on a Zoom call is not the right time to do it. And I will go on record and second Councilmember Ashby's motion to table this item to a future meeting. If you have any further questions, please let me know.
Michael, thank you for your comments. Of course, while we prize the public commenting, you can't second a motion. And there isn't a motion on the table, actually. But we take your comments in and appreciate them very, very much. Let's go to the next caller.
Next caller, please. We got a transfer error. I believe we have one or two more in queue. We'll try the second Transfer the next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, Mayor and council members. This is Heather Fargo. And I sent you all emails earlier, and I e-commented on this item number 19. And my bottom line, I think, has been completely reinforced by the technological difficulties you are having. My request is that you continue this item until you can have a real public hearing, where the public can be heard, and where they can see you all making a decision. I don't think there's anything urgent about what you're doing tonight. I don't want to repeat and don't have time to repeat some of the comments that Angelique made, which I agree with. But I think this is a process of leaving the public out. And tonight's meeting is an example of that, unfortunately. And I appreciate that you're trying to use technology to still include people. But most of this community does not feel included in this process. Many community associations have not heard about it until just recently. They are not aware of what the impacts could be. And I think you need to just put a hold on this until you can meet with community members and really figure out what parts of this proposal are worth adopting and which ones need to be changed. I think there's some good parts of it, but I think overall, this is basically giving away the store. And I don't understand why all of you wouldn't want to be involved in all the decisions that affect your various districts. So I urge you to put this on hold and to just continue it until you can have a meeting and until you can have substantive conversations with the communities that will be affected. Thank you for listening, and good luck with your decisions.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you, Mayor Fargo, for calling in. It's always good to hear from a former mayor. Absolutely. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Harris, but I just want to understand one other thing. What has been the process thus far leading up to tonight's vote?
Mr. Mayor, if you want, Garrett had that slide, if he wants to put that back up.
Could you please?
That can show you what we've done over time.
Yeah. Garrett, if you could please put that back up, I'd appreciate it.
Garrett Norman, would you share your screen and present your PowerPoint?
We skip my question for now and wait. As soon as you can get that up, I'd appreciate it if you would. Vice Mayor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. So after listening to Angelique, I'd have to say that I've reached rather different conclusions than she has. Over the years that I've been on the council, people have expressed a lot of frustration about the process, and often are unaware of building projects until they're appealed to council. And very often say to me, why didn't I get a notice? Why haven't I received any notice of this project? Why have I not heard of it until now? I think that this ordinance actually addresses a lot of those concerns, and I do believe that it will lead to more participation in the process. And while people may not come to council to voice their concerns about projects, they will have ample opportunity to be involved in the planning and design process from the beginning, and meet with the director at director hearings to give input to the projects, but can also be more involved throughout the development of the entire project. The Planning and Design Commission, and Garrett, if he gets back on, can attest to this as well, passes almost all of the discretionary projects that come to them, almost always unanimously. In fact, my Planning and Design Commissioner said that much of the work that they do in this realm is not a good use of their time, and they feel that they can do better work working on policy than just looking at individual projects. This streamlining of the ordinance will give certainty to developers. We need housing, and we need developers to feel like there is a just and fair process by which they can present a project, welcome design input from the community, which they largely cannot participate in currently, and get a project through without undue cost. I believe that we'll get more housing units by approving this ordinance. And again, I believe that the public will have more opportunity for participation. This doesn't take on the really tough projects. Projects can still be appealed to the Planning and Design Commission and be heard there. This process has been ongoing for quite a long time. As you can see, you know, from this public participation, this has been talked about for a year. How many years do we have to take to change an ordinance to give builders some certainty that they can get a project done? I think everybody on the Planning and Design Commission would say that because of the cumbersome aspect of our current process, that many projects aren't even proposed, let alone built. There's no denying that we need housing, and there's no denying that perhaps some of the policies of yesteryear that prevented housing from getting built led us to the dark of clutter that we have now, that has led to very difficult discussions about rent control. You know, we need more inventory. That's the long and the short of it. And I believe that council members will have plenty of input, and not only from their constituents, but to the builders and developers on these projects. I think a lot of good work has gone into this process, and I'm in support. I would like to second Councilmember Hanson's motion.
Thank you. Who is next in the queue? Councilmember Gedda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. I come at this from a different point of view here. I've never been a builder, and I haven't done any contract work. But I have served for a long time as a president for a neighborhood association, volunteered for a lot of the committee meetings as a community member well before this. I served as a planning commissioner for the county, and chaired the county planning commission for three years. And so the public process component is something that I take very seriously because I think that's the feedback component. And I will say from both of those experiences and now being on the council, that there are many projects, many projects, that do not need to go through this level of review, that the wood staff at the local city, in the director level, can be able to resolve a lot of these issues and take that credit. I remember many hearings where we spent a lot of time on projects that took up time for us to work on the more critical projects. And I want to give the planning commission a lot of credit for coming to this decision, because I think as a planning commissioner myself, I never thought of the concept yet of saying, let's focus on the project that takes most of our time and require us to give more attention to people because of more of the input. The fact is, is that the way this is drafted, it's those projects with significant variances. Let's still have to come to that. And if we really want to address the needs of working families, if we really want to help working families, we're going to take decisions and efforts that are going to help us address the cost of housing, increase the supply, and provide resources, and increase the amount of childcare. You know, I think it's a little disingenuous to say that a childcare business would locate an external channel, or a channel would locate a connection to a childcare business. The fact is that it's already difficult to even open a location, which is why, over when we had a large forum with providers without the region, one of the big issues that came up was our own process to open up a business in childcare. And we know it now, that when we come out of this situation, we get out of COVID, if the requirements that we currently have for childcare centers, that are given down by the state, are strict, and we increase the cost of actually opening one, we're going to have a problem where workers can't find a facility, where people can't get into a space unless you can pay more to reserve a spot. So one of those, I think, components here on the CUP part is critical. I agree that we should pull out the alcohol component. Alcohol, most operators do well, but when we have problems with alcohol facilities or retailers, I think that requires more input on that. And I think it's a distraction to the overall conversation, because it's what are the needs of the working families? What are the policies kind of applied? I'll also bring up that when we continue to increase the cost of housing, and builders rebuild housing at a higher cost, then the sale at the resident side is a higher cost. And when you're trying to do influence community, then your sale cost and the price cost of housing, that's how you get gentrification. So if you want to continue superbuilding with higher costs and create gentrification, then we can sit idle and not try to be creative. I do think that we should look back at this policy. It is, I think, something that is new and different, much like we've started looking at our policies in city. Is this going in the right direction? Do we need to readjust? Do we need to make changes? At the Law and Legislation Committee, I requested that this come back to the council with a six-month review back. So, you know, as part of direction on this, I'd like it for this to come back in six months. If the COVID situation is still at a point where we haven't seen this policy take effect, then I'd ask that we can kick that six months, again, for another six months. But I'd like to come back in six months. Also, for the maker of the motion and the second, I'd also like that if we can move the 300-foot requirement to 500-foot requirements. And I only bring this up because of my own personal experience, both as a neighborhood association leader, and a project that came in that occurred where 500 feet allows you to look at the implications in a two-block area. Many times, particularly in some of these developments, the effects affect the two-block area. So I'd like to be able to, I want to request that friendly amendment to move that to 500 feet. And the last thing I'll ask, the third point, is one, that the staff report, much like our planning commission information, be posted online at least three days prior, similar to the Brown Act requirements. Because I do think that neighborhood associations should be able to pull that staff report down, not just use the tracker. I think the tracker's been a good tool. In fact, many folks in the land use committee at the, or one of my neighborhood associations, in their land use committee, they use the tracker. But downloading the staff report, I think, is a much easier method. So those are the three requests that I'd like the maker of the motion and the second to consider before I can support this. I think it's a step forward. And more importantly, we had a housing crisis before going into COVID. We have a housing crisis right now and challenges. If we don't do things and don't start, continue to do the work that we need to address the housing crisis, we're going to have an even bigger one when we get out of this. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to hear from the makers of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Gedda. I know Councilmember Chenier wants to talk. I think I'll go next and then turn it over to Councilmember Chenier.
Mayor, I just would like to say I'd be happy to accept those friendly amendments.
You accept the friendly amendments. Very good. As a second to the motion, also, accept them?
I will accept them, Mr. Mayor.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to go. And if you want to finish up, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, I'm going to be brief. I think Steve and Jeff and Eric were quite articulate in the reasons that this is a good thing, both from the contracting side, the certainty for folks who are doing the development. I just want to address two things really quickly. One is, I want to make sure we thank Alex and the planning commission. I think we all appoint really smart people to do the work, and the fact that they've taken this on their own, going to Portland and all of that, but really thinking through a better role for the planning commission on policy issues versus project by project. So I just want to say thank you and relay that to all of the planning commissioners. Those are the folks that we want to serve on all of our commissions, not just to be a rubber stamp, but to really think about the role that they're playing and how the city can be better because of that. So that's one thing. The other thing, I just wanted to address the engagement piece, both for tonight. And let's be clear, tonight is not the only time that we've talked about this. We've been talking about this for a year. We had it scheduled for the council, I think, five, six weeks ago. Folks on this, on the council, wanted it to go back to law and ledge. It went back to law and ledge. I think we had a really robust discussion there about it, and then brought it back and had a brief discussion last week. But a good discussion today. I think this is important. And for those who have been involved in these types of issues for a long time, they have expressed their opinions on this, and they've been expressing their opinions on it for months. So I don't think that there's been a lack of engagement on the policy itself or on the ordinance itself. On the other side of the engagement issue for folks in the neighborhoods, I think this, what this does is it really pushes their engagement to an earlier stage of the development. And that's incredibly important. One, because that's, it's a lot easier for a developer to make changes at that point, and it's a lot less expensive. When you wait until the end, if it comes to the planning commission or comes to the council, and changes are required then, there's a lot of sunken costs for people. I think that's why some of the folks who are backing this are supporting it, because they see certainty in what they're doing. They see less cost over time. But I think, and change is hard, but people make adjustments, that getting engaged early in the process really benefits everyone and will make the projects better over time. And I just want to reiterate, Steve, I think it's the right thing to do to remove the alcohol CUP piece from this. That's where a lot of the challenges, even though I think they had three CUPs in all of last year on this. The last thing I just want to say, again, to thank the planning commission, I believe the vote was 11 to 1 on the planning commission for this. I know there was one opposition. I think it was 11 or 10 to 1. So with that, I'm very happy that we've got there. I think bringing it back in six months, unless there's nothing going on, and then kick it another six months. But we definitely want to see it. And I know the planning commission or commissioners will be back to us on other items.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you to the members. Before we take a vote, I also want to thank the planning commission, because it's an example of our community leadership actually taking leadership. We want our commissions to be active and to suggest to us how the process might be better. I think it is, to state the obvious, one of the considerations I weigh on this measure is the fact that the planning commission is appointed by the mayor and the city council. They are appointees. We have the ability to appoint people who are philosophically aligned with our point of view on planning and development. We each have an appointment. The PP&amp;E committee appoints a number of members. So this is a city council constituted planning commission. I think that's relevant. I think that's relevant. I want to say I do have sympathy with the concerns of of those who have expressed opposition to this because it is an important interest to allow maximum resident input in any decision that is made involving the public good. But everything that we do is a balance. And to me, that interest, which is compelling, is not absolute, especially when you consider the history, not just in Sacramento, but elsewhere of people, residents, sometimes stopping projects which meet a compelling community need, get defeated because the use is not preferred in the particular neighborhood. And certainly, a couple of my colleagues have mentioned this, but two of the categories that stand out very clearly are affordable housing and the residential care communities, sometimes the not the most popular land uses, but two of the most important needs, unmet needs in our community. And I think on balance, if we can make it easier to cite good projects with sufficient review, that we will meet a broader objective of meeting those needs. You know, sometimes I think we work at cross purposes and it's not unique to us. I was thinking as I was listening to the debate about, and I don't know where you or my colleagues stood on this, but Senator Weiner from San Francisco, his SB 50, the very controversial bill that would have created essentially by right for affordable housing developers to be able to build near transit stations. And it was amazing to me how many progressive people said that they were all for affordable housing and we need more of it, but opposed that bill because it took away the control of local government to be able to say no. And so I looked at that and I was in support of the bill and I said, isn't the most important objective for us in California, as we think about the equity issues, which we talked at length about today, we talk about affordable housing, the housing crisis in California, that we ought to be doing everything, whether it is state-led or locally-led, to try and increase the inventory and supply of affordable housing? And the same is true of homeless-related facilities and mental health facilities. And yet, it's so easy to stop those projects. So to me, this is a balance. And I think on balance that this is a smart reform because the planning commission is in fact council-appointed. And there is significant process, important process, as outlined in the ordinance, where the public has a significant amount of input. So I support the ordinance. And I thank you. Let's call the roll on the measure.
Councilmember Ashby?
No.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sheneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right, thank you. That passes eight to one. All right, do we have a report on the Department of Utilities Storm Drain Fund Review?
Our next item is 21.
Oh, no, we have OPSA, I'm sorry.
Appointment of the Director of the Office of Public Safety Accountability, Latisha Watson on the line if you'd like me to patch her in.
If I may, but first let me introduce her. And I first of all, want to thank Vice Mayor Harris for leading this process here. I was not able to to participate, but Jeff, you did a really fine job with the other members and it was a very competitive process. And in the end, you came up with a great candidate, Latisha Watson, to be our next Director of the Office of Public Safety Accountability. And Latisha, we welcome you to this very, very important position where your job will require a great deal of skill and dexterity to make sure that the community has a very strong voice when it comes to helping us oversee our police and fire departments and at the same time to to get to know the people in our in our very fine departments and to and to be a leader on these issues, which are so central, not just to our city, but to the the issues throughout our nation. Jeff, you want to make a few comments since, again, you led the process and then we will ask Ms. Watson to introduce herself and say a few words?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate it. We interviewed three candidates from a pool originally, I think, over 40, went down to the final three that we interviewed. And Latisha actually had a handicap. We couldn't get her video working, whereas we were able to with the other candidates. I would say it flustered her a little bit, but she managed to storm through it, to push through it and answer our questions with grace and aplomb. Latisha has a real depth of experience in the military, in policing, in community engagement, and her educational background is exemplary. And she is a very interesting personality as well. I believe that we selected her because we were looking for a candidate who could connect our police department to the community. And I think she has the exact background to do just that. And so I'm happy to present Latisha Watson. She was selected unanimously by our committee. There was no hesitation. We all came to the same conclusion for very similar reasons. So Latisha, welcome, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilman staff. This is a very, very exciting time for me as well as my family. Yes, as Vice Mayor mentioned, we had some technical difficulties that we're having tonight with our process for the the position. But I got through that and I was graciously selected for this position. And again, as I said, it is an honor to be able to come and join all of the wonderful members of the city of Sacramento and get to know them as well as them get to know me. Just a little bit about myself, as he said, my father was in the military, so I was born in Germany. But after that, we settled in the suburbs of Dallas, Texas. And I have an exceeding amount of experience in in policing as well as consulting work for the best practices across the country for the 18,000-plus law enforcement organizations. But overall, I'm just excited to come and and get to know all of the stakeholders there in the city of Sacramento and continue the foundation that has already been set for the Office of Public Safety Accountability.
Thank you. When are you starting?
We are hoping, we're pushing for June 8th. We're having some logistical challenges because of COVID-19 and relocation companies coming into the home and packing up and moving. So I believe I should know something tomorrow if they'll be successful in giving the approval to come and pack everything up and transport it to California from Texas.
Well, you know, be safe and do it do it in the right way. And we look forward to meeting you, you know, even if it's virtually, once you get here.
Yes, I look forward to meeting everyone.
Okay. Thank you again, Vice Mayor Harris, to all the councilmembers and staff. I want to thank my chief staff, Kelly Rivas, for helping to lead this process as well. She did a really good job helping me to to organize this. So very, very good. Let's take a motion in a second.
I'd like to move approval.
A second.
Okay, it's taken by Councilmember Carr. Let's call the roll on the item, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, welcome aboard, Latisha.
Thank you.
Councilmember Warren?
Aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye, Latisha, happy to have you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye, welcome, Latisha. Excited to work with you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sheneer?
Aye, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye, and it's good to see your video worked again.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye, and we can't wait to get you in Sacramento.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye, and Latisha?
Yes, sir.
Working with you.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Mayor Steinberg?
Aye, and you are going to love Sacramento.
My family is excited as well. Yes, sir.
Wonderful. All right, that is a unanimous vote. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Please travel safe and we look forward to seeing you in in several weeks.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg.
Okay. Very good. Is there a report on item 21? Jorge, okay.
Hello? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. Jorge Segarra, your city auditor. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion approving the city auditor's Department of Utilities Storm Drainage Fund review. With me tonight to present this report is Ben Stewart from the firm Standec, who did the actual analysis and work, as well as a member from my staff, Jordan Sweeney, who managed the project. Mr. Stewart will be doing the presentation. We understand that there's a need to be brief in this, and so we will be brief in our presentation. And with that, Benjamin?
Thank you, Jorge. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much for having me today. Excuse me. Let me pop up my screen here and I'll walk you through this presentation. I want to start by thanking Jordan Sweeney, Farishta Arary, and Jorge for all of their assistance and hard work in coordinating this review. I think it's a great process that the city is going through to evaluate the fund and the system, to understand where you are and where you would like to be in the future. I also want to thank everybody at DOU for all of their hard work compiling information, dealing with all of my questions and going through this process together. It was a really fruitful process, I think. So to start with, I'll walk through a little bit of background on the Storm Drainage Fund. The Storm Drainage Fund manages the runoff flows and and surface water flows during storm events. It seems meant to be that we would be discussing this on a unique day of rain in mid-May. It was meant to be today. The city's storm drainage system is unique for California in that it's one of only two systems within the state that includes a combined sewer system, the other being San Francisco. Additionally, it pumps about 95% of the storm drainage flows, which is pretty unique, and adds some cost and burden to the system. Additionally, the city has struggled to raise revenues since the passage of Prop 218 in 1996. This is not unique for storm drainage utilities in the state, but it's led to funding challenges for the city and for the system. One thing that's worth noting is that the the only other combined sewer system in the state is in San Francisco, managed by SFPUC. And for them, it's an entirely combined system and it's managed through their wastewater fund, which makes it a little bit easier to raise revenues to to meet their funding Our study consisted of a system asset valuation. This was conducted in order to form an understanding of what the entire system is worth, what your all of your infrastructure is is worth and the value of all of the construction and projects that have gone into that system. This valuation was compiled by processing asset data provided by DOU staff. This information was lacking, some critical information that is often included in an asset register, such as original cost, installation date, and useful life. And this is a recognized deficiency. DOU recognizes this and they've included an update to the asset register in their master plan. But because of this lack of information, we had to utilize some cost estimate approaches, cost estimating approaches, using typical and average dimensions for these different assets and assigning unit costs to each in order to estimate the value of the system. The grand total came to about $8.1 billion for all of your storm drainage infrastructure. But again, I need to point out that that has a wide margin of error based on this approach to cost estimating and valuation. So it's something that the DOU hopes to improve on in the future to update that asset register. We also completed a benchmarking analysis. This was done to compare the city's Storm Drainage Fund to peer communities around the state. We looked at 11 different key key performance indicators, mostly financial, also a couple operational and socioeconomic indicators. A lot more discussion of this is included in the report, but the biggest takeaways are ultimately that your your expenditures are increasing and at the same time, your revenues have been flat since 1996 or largely flat, and this has led to a decrease in your available fund balance. And so following along with that, that is also limiting your ability to invest in the system, invest in the infrastructure, which is thereby also increasing the risk of critical system failures. So like I said earlier, this is not a unique challenge for within the state of California. Many other agencies and communities are dealing with similar challenges. An additional point that we wanted to bring up is just simply the reason that it's been so difficult to raise revenues for to to meet your funding needs for the storm drainage system. And a lot of it ties back to the passage of Prop 218. I imagine a lot of the folks in this meeting are familiar with the process of Prop 218. I won't go through the entire process, but ultimately, one key distinction is that unlike water, wastewater, and solid waste fees, storm drainage fees cannot be increased or adopted with a simple majority protest vote. The bar is much higher and requires a two-thirds majority from the electorate or a simple majority of affected property owners. Recently, in 2017, SB 231 was passed, and this was intended to include storm drainage and stormwater in the definition of sewer, which would allow sewer fees to be adopted or increased with the simple or with the majority protest vote. But to date, no communities have attempted this and there have been vows of lawsuits from advocacy groups around the state. So it's a challenge, but it's a it's a step to try to lower that bar slightly for for storm drainage fees. So building on all of this information, looking at the system valuation, benchmarking the the community's financials or the system financials, we undertook a fiscal forecasting process and we went through the process of reviewing data, reviewing level of service targets, evaluating capital plans and existing operating plans to determine potential paths for the future for the Storm Drainage Fund. We took all of this and ultimately built this into a 20-year financial model that allowed us to forecast the fund's performance under these different scenarios. As part of this, we built up, I think it's six scenarios altogether. Each of these are outlined and discussed in detail in the report, but I'm going to focus on two of them today. Ultimately, each of these scenarios focused on varying levels of capital investment, adjusting the timing and ramp-up period for meeting level of service targets, and and alternative methods of allocating combined sewer costs. So currently, the the combined sewer system costs are split between the wastewater fund and the storm drainage fund, and there are potential methodologies for determining how to allocate those costs. And so you'll you see 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D adjust those allocation methodologies. So each of those are discussed in detail in the report. But today, I'll focus on a continuation of that current level of service and one alternative that includes a ramp-up to the level of service targets. So starting with scenario one here, this is a continuation of the current operating paradigm, and we dub this the current underfunded level of service. So this is essentially continuing on with your current operations and continuing with the current five-year capital investment plan, which is recognized to be insufficient. It's 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 a five-year investment plan that is simply it's a value that's set based on the funding constraints. It's a value that's set based on the funding constraints. The key takeaway here is that we have a few near-term projects that bring the... So what I'm showing you here is the fund balance for the Storm Drainage Fund. The blue columns represent the year-end fund balance over the forecast period. And then, the black line represents the reserve target for your operating reserve, which is four years of operating expenses. And so, you can see that due to some near-term capital, in 2022, we fall just below that operating reserve target and before rebounding slightly due to decreased capital investment. But then, due to simply cost escalation factors, we end up falling short of that target again in 2026, and ultimately hit zero by 2030. So the takeaway here is that even without a change to your current operations, and even continuing with an underfunded level of service, you would still require rate increases in the near future in order to simply maintain that level of spending. So then, if we skip to scenario 3A, this is looking at a ramped-up approach to meeting level of service targets. So one key input into this financial forecast was a 30-year CIP developed by DOU that represents like a best management practices capital investment plan. In addition to that, we worked with DOU staff to identify some additional level of service enhancements. And so, what this plan is showing is a phased ramp-up to meeting those targets, reaching the targets by the end of the decade in fiscal year 2029, 2030. So we're working our way up towards those targets, but we are increasing spending in order to enhance the level of service. Ultimately, with zero rate increases and trying to meet these level of service targets, you ultimately have a one, over $1 billion spend or funding gap that needs to be made up over that 20-year period. On the other hand, if you want to flip it and look at it another way, the storm drainage fee would need to increase by about 163% by the end of the decade in order to meet these funding needs. And that would equate to about a $30 fee by the end of the decade, increasing from $1,131 for your typical residential customer right now, or typical residential parcel, to $30 by the end of the decade. And this is about a $1.80 per year increase in order to meet these spending or funding needs. So just, there's a lot going on in this chart. But just to get you oriented, the black shading in the bottom is the operating expenses. Everything above follows the same color scheme, but everything that's hatched is simply what's unfunded. So you can see that by the second decade, the current levels of revenue are insufficient simply to meet operating expenditures, let alone capital in the orange. So just to summarize, this process, I think, it didn't necessarily tell anybody anything they didn't know to some degree, but I think that it helped quantify and better understand the dynamics of the fund and what it can and can't do at the current funding levels going into the future. As of right now, the storm drainage fees have not been increased since 1996 due to those challenges of Prop 218. These flat revenues and increasing cost pressures have limited the system investment, and this has introduced risk for the Storm Drainage Fund, both in the form of critical system failures and potential noncompliance. The true funding need of the Storm Drainage System is in far, vastly exceeds current funding levels. And ultimately, in order to meet those level of service targets in the future, fees would need to increase. And a thoughtful approach to seeking outside funding, as well as a measure, or an approach to increasing fees gradually to meet these targets, would make sense. So that's the grand summary of the Storm Drainage Fund Review. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
All right, thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. Vice Mayor Harris had a question.
Yeah, if we were successful in raising our storm drainage fees, would we be able to fund our combined sewer system improvement program without incurring debt service?
That I can't speak to for sure. It depends, from the Storm Drainage Fund perspective, it depends on how those costs are allocated. We simply focus solely on the Storm Drainage Fund. In this analysis, we did not include any additional debt. But I think at the end of the day, it would depend on how those costs are shared between the two funds and the funding capacity of the two, and the level of increases that would actually be implemented.
Okay, well, it's something to consider for the future when looking at the storm drain rate. Obviously, we need to improve our combined sewer system, but incurring debt service just kicks the can farther down the road. And, you know, I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, that one of the things that I have felt that the council has not done over the last three decades is start saving for infrastructure improvement. And it's coming to bear now with the investments we're having to make in the combined sewer system, as evidenced by the McKinley Vault project in District 3 and Ninth Street Sewer, in D4. You know, we have a lot of upgrades that we have to do. We've got an old system, and we've got a lot of old pipes, and we don't have conveyance capability that we need. Regional Sand, of course, is making huge investments in treatment, but we still have to get our effluent down there. And when you combine stormwater with sewage, that means the volume is tremendous, and our city is growing. So it's sad, but true. But we have to plan for the future and plan for the upgrades of our aging infrastructure. So that being said, I'm happy to move approval of this report.
Now, now that we have this report, and it shows us the need and the gap, what's next? City Manager?
So I'll build you safe. Our Department of Utilities Directors on the line, too. But we're going to be bringing that back to council to consider what type of increases to rates we will have to look at in order to meet some of the capital improvement projects that we're going to have to undertake in the next five years or so.
So this is our warning to us and the residents that it's coming.
Correct.
Because this is crucial infrastructure. All right, anyone else? Do we have public comment on this item? Yep, Councilman Hanson?
I'm happy to let public comment go first, if there is some.
I have no public comment.
No public comment. You're up.
I just wanted to second Jeff's motion and say, as much as we worry about water pipes breaking, and we've done a lot to accelerate infrastructure, these combined sewer pipes, when they break, it's a big mess. It's a big disaster. And this system, obviously not just for flood control, but also for effluent, is really critical. And we have an old city with old infrastructure, and at some point, we're going to have to tackle this. We got close with the Prop 218 vote a couple of years ago, and ultimately, put that on hold for a variety of reasons. But I do think tackling this is something that we need to figure out. Maybe not during this particular COVID crisis, but we do need a longer-term plan.
Yep, we got to get through this period of time now. And then, we'll get to it. All right, there's no other comments. There was a second on the motion. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren has left the meeting and asked to be recused from this item. So Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
That was a yes from Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinberg?
Aye, I think Councilmember Ashby was here, right? Did you get her vote?
She is. I did get her vote. It was an "I" vote.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That concludes the agenda for tonight. This was a special meeting, so we don't take public comment on items not on the agenda or council ideas or questions. If there's nothing further to come before the City Council, thank you for a long but productive day. We are adjourned.